Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by your local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Reciting over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Harvey L. Hall.
Good evening and welcome, everyone. I'm sorry that we're a few minutes past our starting time, but the City Council had some relative issues to discuss that took us a little longer than usual. It's my pleasure to call to order the City Council meeting of September the 2nd, 2015, and ask the city clerk to please call a roll.
Mayor Hall.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Maxwell.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Parlier.
Here.
At this time, I would like us all to stand for the invocation which I will present, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance by Kami Willerford, 3rd grade student at New Life Christian School. We gather to make decisions for our community this evening. May we use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merit and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us, and always act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation and God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we proceed, I request that all cellular telephones and communication devices be silenced. Pursuant to City Council policy, council members are prohibited from sending or receiving electronic communications during the meeting, and we request the same from our audience. For safety reasons and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chambers. Also, please be courteous in the use of any still cameras and video equipment. Audience applause is allowed during the presentation portion of the meeting, but is not permissible at any time during the meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. I'd like to recognize now, for special recognition, the Bakersfield College Political Science Class. Thank you for your presence here this evening. We hope that you gather a good lot of information about city government, and I always encourage you to come back again at a later meeting. Corny Rodriguez and I go back a long ways, and he always sends the best students forward that come down here. So thank you very much for being here this evening. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Under Presentations, Item A is a presentation of a proclamation to Marie Bradshaw, Kids' Cancer Connecting Volunteer, declaring September Childhood Cancer Awareness Month.
Can you ask for our person to be identified again, please, for the presentation?
Marie Bradshaw.
Is Mr. Bradshaw here this evening? Okay, we'll move to the next presentation.
Mayor, the next item is a presentation of a proclamation to Casey the Bull and Kern County Fair CEO Mike Alcott, declaring September 23rd through October 4th, 2015 Kern County Fair Days.
This is always a favorite time of the year, and this year, the fair, the Kern County Fair, will be recognized for its 90th Annual Kern County Fair, and, you know, it means so much to our community and the amount of visitors that come to enjoy a family event at the Kern County Fair, and so tonight, I have a small proclamation to present. The Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, California has officially proclaimed September the 23rd through October 4th, 2015 as Kern County Fair Days in our city in honor of the 90th Annual Great Kern County Fair, and in recognition of the more than 450,000 visitors expected to enjoy this annual 12-day celebration, and in recognition of the abundance and talent this event honors, and in recognition of this fall tradition that emphasizes family values and offers one of the largest junior livestock county fair exhibits in the United States, and confirming that the great Kern County Fair is truly the best in the West, and signed Harvey L. Hall, Mayor, City of Bakersfield. And joining me tonight, obviously on my left, is Casey the Bull, and on my right is Mike Alcott, who is the CEO of the Kern County Fair.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, City Council. First of all, I would like to thank the Council for all the work that you do around the fair. We're getting streetlights this week, and I appreciate that. Thank you very much, Councilman Rivera, for all your work on that. Also, I work with Mr. Tandy a lot, and I guess he said he's going to help me with corn dog eating contests this year, and... No, no. And we have a lot of great food, like Mayor Harvey Hall has said, that we have one of the largest livestock shows in the state of California. We have 2,000 animals coming in this year, 1,500 exhibitors, and about 2.5 million in sales. Last year, we had a buyer come in from the coast with an oil company and a foundation, and she spent about 1.3 million and supplied Cap K with 100,000 pounds of meat for our people that need food assistance. So we thank them for that, and thank our students for all their hard work. We have a huge fair planned for you: duck races, lumberjack shows, butterflies, quilts, everything else, a lot of fried foods that I hope you'll come and enjoy with us. We do have the Boy Scouts with mac and cheese baked potato this year. They want you to all come out and enjoy that, so please, all of you, come out and enjoy the Kern County Fair, and thank you very much for all of your support. Casey and I really do appreciate all of that support. Did you want to say something? No? You don't talk, do you? It's good he doesn't talk. Thank you.
Before I talk about our outstanding recipient this year, I want to give you a little bit of background on the John Brock Award. It was first presented annually in 1988. The recipients have contributed to the enhancement and promotion of our business community and exhibit the highest ethical standards and personal integrity. There have been 29 past recipients. Proceeds from the recognition that are helped fund the CSUB John Brock Endowment, which provides scholarships for students in CSUB's School of Business and Public Administration. It is my pleasure to recognize this year's recipient, Chris Frank. And there's many things that I could say about Chris, because her and I have worked side by side on numerous opportunities in making our community better, and it is a special honor for me to be able to honor Chris tonight. The Mayor of the City of Bakersfield has officially proclaimed September the 10th, 2015 as Chris Frank Day in our city, and in recognition of her selection as the 2015 recipient of the John Brock Award for Community Service, and honoring her dedication to serving the Bakersfield community, particularly as President and CEO for 17 years of the Greater Bakersfield Chamber of Commerce, in recognition of her commitment as co-chairperson of the local AIS Cancer Center at San Joaquin Community Hospital, where her fundraising team raised nearly $6 million in support of the UC Davis Affiliated Cancer Center, and in recognition of her tireless work on numerous boards and committees, including the United States Chamber of Commerce, the Greater Bakersfield Vision 2020, the Fox Foundation, and the Bark Foundation Chairman, and the California Chamber of Commerce, and in recognition of her many contributions to improving the quality of life in our Bakersfield community, and it's signed Harvey L. Hall, Mayor, City of Bakersfield.
Mayor Hall and members of the Council, and to the dedicated staff, thank you so much. Do I get to do anything as my day today? I didn't realize that was coming. I'm so excited. It has just been an honor and a privilege to do anything that was humanly possible to make this community a better place, and just as each of you on the Council and our dedicated staff, it is just a passionate job that we have to build this community to what we know the vision can be, and I am so humbled by this honor by Cal State to receive this. I'm so humbled today by the recognition that you have given me, and I'm just blessed beyond measure to be able to call Bakersfield home. Thank you.
Can you make the recognition again for the person that wasn't here earlier?
Yes, Mayor. Item A is a presentation of a proclamation to Marie Bradshaw, Kids' Cancer Connecting Volunteer, declaring September Childhood Cancer Awareness Month.
Mr. Bradshaw, are you with us? Okay.
Thank you.
Public Statements.
At this time, we will receive public statements. All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, provided to the city clerk, will then provide copies to the city council. If you are here to speak on Hearing Item 10A, this is not the time for you to speak. Members of the audience are asked to avoid engaging in any behavior that disrupts the orderly conduct of the meeting. Please do not criticize or impugn the mayor, city council, or any member of the staff or the audience. The city council is very interested and concerned with your issues. Due to the public notice requirements of the Brown Act, the city council cannot take action if an item is not on the agenda. The city council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Madam Clerk, please call the first public speaker.
Mayor, we have 19 speakers this evening. The first speaker is Rachel Magnus regarding Bakersfield Museum of Art Fall Exhibition Reception.
Good evening. Please identify yourself and proceed.
My name is Rachel Magnus. Thank you, members of the city council. My name is Rachel Magnus, and I'm the curator of the Bakersfield Museum of Art. I'd like to take a few moments tonight to share with you some exciting updates from the museum. On September 10th, we will open an exhibition by Kenton Nelson. Nelson was especially influenced by the Central Valley when creating work for this exhibition. He views our community as the heart of California, including scenes of oil and agriculture. Also opening, the art of the objects, paintings by Pasadena-based artist Bradford J. Solomon, whose paintings of vintage objects ignite memories from many of your childhoods, such as radios, toys, and spice tins. The final show, woven in tradition, Navajo textiles from the Hilbert Collection, highlights the powerful aesthetic and graphic design trends that characterize Navajo weaving. I invite each of you to join us that evening. Also, on October 10th through 11th, the Bakersfield Museum of Art will host its 17th Annual Via Arte Italian Street Chalk Festival. This large public art exhibition will attract thousands of visitors and engage over 70 professional and aspiring artists. These exhibitions are just part of how we strive to promote the visual arts in Bakersfield. Our education programs, both onsite and throughout Kern County, introduce the visual arts to students, young and old. I hope you will join us at the museum on September 10th for our opening. I've left some brochures with you. If you cannot join, please be our guest at the museum in the months ahead. Thank you.
Would you like to introduce your associates that you have with you?
Yes, this is Erwin Ledford. He's the graphic designer and marketing coordinator at the museum, and this is Andy Stanley. He is the chair of our board.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker.
The next speaker is Jennifer Sanchez regarding CSUB Bike Share Program.
Please identify yourself and proceed.
Hello, thank you, Mayor Hall. My name is Jennifer Sanchez. Good evening, members of the city council. I am a graduate student at California State University, Bakersfield. I am also the newly-elected Executive Vice President of Associated Students Incorporated, which is CSU-Bakersfield Student Government. We are about to start the new academic year, and I am here to invite you to our CSUB Week of Welcome, WOW Week. At CSUB, students are committed to being good stewards of our environment and reducing our carbon footprint. Personally, I'm an avid advocate for recycling. Two of the main areas of environmental sustainability that CSU-Bakersfield students are involved in are recycling and alternative transportation. For recycling, we reduce waste by engaging in recycle mania-friendly student-led recycling competition among colleges and universities nationwide. The competition is just eight weeks long, but we recycle all year long. Like you, we also have a campus beautification project to improve the appearance of our campus and keep it litter-free. For alternative transportation, we work to reduce single-occupant vehicle travel to and from campus by increasing our use of public transit, and we recently started a bike-share program for short-distance trips. This bike-share program is available for students, faculty, and staff to rent bicycles daily for free, and in the first 20 days since its opening, bicycles have been checked out 780 different times. We recently applied to the League of American Bicycleists to be designated as a bicycle-friendly university, and we are asking you to support our application by completing a League of American Bicycleists survey about CSU-Bakersfield. You should have the handouts in front of you. If you don't know about our bike-share program and our group rides, we invite you to come to campus on Wednesday, September 16th, 2015, and join us for a 7:30 AM bike ride around our campus and the official launch of our bike-share program, which is going to follow, at 9:00 AM. Please take the survey by September 18th, 2015. To conclude, once again, please come to the Bike Share on September 16th at 7:30 AM. Please complete the survey, and when done, please pass the handout to a friend who may want to take the survey, or when discarding, please remember that you can toss it into the recycling bin. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you very much. We appreciate Cal State engaging the city and working together with the city on different opportunities, and bike-share is something that's spreading throughout the nation, and it's great to see Cal State leading the way in Bakersfield. So, thank you, and we'll see you on the 16th at 7:30. I'm sure we'll all be there.
Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker.
Mayor, the next public speaker is Roger Southfield regarding Compassionate Care Center.
Please identify yourself and proceed.
My name is Roger Southfield, Mayor Hall, City Council, City Staff. I'm here again from last month. Again, I was somewhat kind of confusing when I talked about liability. Again, I'm going to clarify a little bit more about the Compassionate Care Center, how it'll take off the liability of the city. I'm asking the City of Bakersfield to allow me to segregate myself from the rest of the industry right now that I'm presently being discriminated against and making it look like I'm a criminal, but I need this for medical use. I wouldn't be able to walk and stand here at this podium at this time if I didn't have medical marijuana. Presently, right now, this industry, with over 30 dispensaries in this city, are presently running illegally, and that's where I brought in the liability clause. Again, we're all quite aware of this, but again, because of this liability existing, I might be able to lose my ability to even walk, and I have to go back to synthetic medications. At one time, the synthetic medications almost killed me, but unfortunately, I was saved by my son, of all things, and he told me, "Well, Dad, you told me when you were a kid, use marijuana. How come you don't use it again?" And I had to explain to my son, "Because we can't. Nobody wants to go ahead and take on the liability or the responsibility of something that's an alternative drug." Again, all I'm asking the City of Bakersfield is a pilot program, comparisons with my program with the existing program the City of Bakersfield has to be able to fit my needs come 2016. I have a goal list that I've planned out that I've been working with the city attorneys on, but I've come to the City Council again to ask and allow me to continually work with the city attorneys to come up with some type of plan that'll work with both. I have a way of, again, coming up with a coalition that now is nationwide. We started a cannabis minority group. As a minority group, we're asking for our rights to be listened to and heard to. Again, thank you very much, and again, consideration again of my situation, that I have no way of segregating myself from the rest, and I agree with the city right now that over 80% of my industry is being ran wrong, but I have nobody to turn to to help me. So please, consider this proposal that I'm offering the city to take a look at as comparisons to start making revenue. The Compassionate Care Center is actually an educational center that the City of Bakersfield will actually get federal aid and federal grants, once we identify this together, the two of us. But somebody is going to have to come up with regulations come 2016, and I'm afraid the regulations that are to come out in 2016, the City of Bakersfield and all the other cities, at one more time, will be stuck with being able to come up with the cost to be able to regulate the industry itself. And I really truthfully believe with my plan that I've showed many other cities, this is beneficial to the city and not a hindrance, and especially, nothing wrong with taking a look at it. Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker.
The next public speaker is Carol Castine regarding ban on sale of fireworks.
Please identify yourself and proceed.
My name is Dr. Carol Castine. Mayor Hall, Vice Mayor Hanson, members of the city council and city staff, I really appreciate the opportunity to address you today on the controversial yet important topic of banning the sale and use of personal fireworks by the citizens of Bakersfield. I had an experience about 15 years ago that left a lasting impression on me as to the dangers of even firecrackers and other legal fireworks. About 15 years ago, I was on call on July the 4th as an ophthalmologist for a group of ophthalmologists in Bakersfield. Between 9:00 PM and midnight, I saw three patients with potentially blinding eye injuries caused by simple firecrackers that had detonated improperly. None of the three patients that I cared for that night were drunk, none were using illegal fireworks. Fortunately, all three individuals recovered from the injuries without loss of vision. However, the experience left a lasting impression on me as to the dangers of even simple firecrackers and other legal fireworks. The dangers of personal fireworks have been debated at length by Lois Henry of the Bakersfield Californian, and I greatly respect the time and effort and research on her part to educate the general public. I've wanted to speak up for a long time, and have decided to do so after reading the interview of our police chief in the Bakersfield Californian regarding fireworks and enforcement issues. He basically stated that it is nearly impossible for him to enforce the regulations currently in effect, and it's almost impossible for him to safely protect the public on July the 4th. He has given his professional opinion that the City of Bakersfield should ban the use of personal fireworks on July the 4th. This past July the 4th, a homeowner in the City of Bakersfield had their home burned down as a result of fireworks. In the past, a homeowner, Ray Riley Jr., died as a result of injuries sustained from illegal fireworks from a neighbor's yard. I would like to point out to the City of Bakersfield council members that there are many other ways for the nonprofits to make money besides selling fireworks. There are many small businesses and corporations here in Bakersfield who I believe would be more than happy to help the nonprofits with fundraising that does not involve fireworks. I would like to recommend to the City of Bakersfield Council that you develop a coalition of individuals interested in supporting the nonprofits with developing fundraising efforts that do not involve selling fireworks. I'd be more than happy to volunteer. I know there are others who are far more experienced than I in fundraising, but I would be more than happy to donate my time. Please, ban the use of personal fireworks in the City of Bakersfield. Take the professional advice of our fire chief and police chief and protect the public. Not one more home should burn on July the 4th. Not one more individual should suffer a serious or life-threatening injury due to fireworks. Let's not put our uniformed police officers at risk when the nonprofits have many, many other options to make money. Last but not least, I'd like to recommend to the City of Bakersfield City Council that you have a committee to develop a safe and sane celebration of the Fourth of July involving perhaps a parade on the streets of the City of Bakersfield, followed by free hot dogs and root beer floats at Riverwalk Park, followed by a professional fireworks display administered by professionals, so that we can have a safe and sane Fourth of July celebration. Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker.
Mayor, the next speaker is Stacy Inman regarding Park at Riverwalk Memorial.
Please identify yourself and proceed.
Hello, my name is Stacy Inman. I've been a member of this community since 1989. I'm here on behalf of the ALS Association, the Golden West Chapter. I'd like to thank you, Mayor Hall, Vice Mayor Hanson, and council members for allowing me to speak. Prior to 2004, there was nothing in Kern County to help people with ALS, Amyotrophic Lateral Sclerosis, better known as Lou Gehrig's Disease. Fortunately, last year, a young man who was 29 starred the ALS Ice Bucket Challenge, and many people now know what it is that previously did not know what it is. It's a terminal disease. Everyone dies from it. In two to five years, 80% of the people will die after being diagnosed. My husband was lucky. He lived with it for 14 years. He passed away in November of 2013. We had to drive to Los Angeles for services for four years because there was nothing here, and we thought that the support group was so important in Los Angeles that we did that, and then we decided we needed to help Kern County. We started the Walk to Defeat ALS in 2004. We started at Beach Park for two years, and then we continued it at the Park at Riverwalk. We have raised over a million dollars for this community since 2004 to help people of Kern County and the City of Bakersfield with this deadly disease. We've held a support group. We have an equipment loan pool. We have a free clinic at Cedar Sinai, and we have a case manager. And because we have done this for the community of Bakersfield, and then we will continue to do this, we would like you to contemplate some type of memorial at the Park at Riverwalk because we moved the walk there in 2006 when the park first opened, and that's where we have had our walk to raise money to help all those in our community with this horrible disease. The youngest person in Kern County who has been diagnosed is 16; the oldest is 83. It's a horrible disease, and the best thing we can do is to help the families and the people deal with this disease and support them through it, and I hope by the time I die... And I hope by the time I die, that there is a cure for this disease. But we would like to celebrate what the association and the four people that helped me and my husband start this in 2004 have done for the community and will continue to do to help those here. So I'd ask you to please send this to study, to contemplate whether you want to do this. And I wanted to apologize to Councilmember Smith, I know it's in your area. I had left a couple of messages at the city council. I don't know if you got them. I did have the opportunity to meet with Vice Mayor Hanson, but I would ask you to please contemplate this as a potential memorial at that park. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor Hall. Mr. Inman, would you get one of our staff members tonight, if possible, and kind of go over what your plan is? And also, I'd like to refer this to planning a development. I think that would be the appropriate committee to look into this memorial at the Riverwalk Park, okay?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker.
Mayor, the next two speakers are here regarding Tour Against Trafficking. The first speaker is Michael Fagans.
Good evening, please identify yourself and proceed.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Michael Fagans, and with me is...
Zachary Griffin.
City council members, Vice Mayor Hanson, city employees. I come to you tonight on behalf of the Right Reverend David Rice, who is the Episcopalian Bishop for the Diocese of the San Joaquin Valley. Before I start, I'd like to thank Mayor Hall for meeting with us a few months ago, and also for Councilmember Smith for meeting with us. A group of core riders will ride seven hundred and fifty miles, starting in Taft and coming to the city of Bakersfield to raise awareness about human trafficking that's going on in the valley. The city of Bakersfield will be the first overnight stop. We will then head up to Kernville and then continue north, winding up in Modesto on October twenty-third. We will be doing this under the power of our own legs. It'll be a bicycle tour. We are encouraging Councilmember Smith and any of the rest of you to join us for one leg, as we call them, for one day. As you may or may not be aware, this is a rapidly growing crime in our valley that impacts not only the folks on Union but further afield. And Councilmember Sullivan, I'd be remiss if I did not also thank you for your work in this area with Magdalen Hope. Doug Bennett, who is the Chair and the Head of Magdalen Hope, cannot be here tonight, but I'm sure you recognize him on TV. Zach, is there anything you'd like to add at the moment?
Well, as Michael mentioned, our first leg will be from Taft to Bakersfield, and it's roughly thirty-five miles. It'll be a fairly easy-paced ride, and we would encourage our civic leaders to come out and enjoy the ride and enjoy the opportunity to celebrate our wonderful roads of Kern County, of course, and then, of course, show their presence for the fight against human trafficking. It's a huge issue. I've personally been made aware of it through this group, but I've had other family members bring it to my attention that it is absolutely on the tip of everyone's mind, from the Rotarians to police, as well as other individuals that are concerned. So it's a health issue, it's a safety issue. Please come out and help us celebrate the personal involvement. The Taft leg is real easy, it's thirty-five miles. We could do it on a beach cruiser if we had to. So please come out and join us, and we, again, thank you for your time.
We will also be screening The Traffic Life, which is a documentary that I helped direct and co-produce. We'll do that on September nineteenth at St. Paul's on Seventeenth Street, and we will send you all invitations for that personally. You're also more than welcome to come and visit us at the TourAgainstTrafficking.org. It's a website. We're closing in on raising ten thousand dollars already, and that will go to seven organizations in the valley that are combating human trafficking, three of which are here in Kern County, Magdalen Hope, the Kern Coalition Against Human Traffic, and the Alliance Against Family Violence. Thank you for your time and your support.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Very important issue, and really appreciate your work on it. Just received an email today from the Attorney General's Office, and there's something happening September sixteenth, also educating the community on this problem. And yeah, I'll be there, and I'm sure everybody else will be. Thank you.
Councilmember Parley.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to refer this to the Safe Neighborhoods Committee. The Police Department has been actively involved in investigating some of these crimes. Recently, they rescued a juvenile that was involved in human trafficking, and I just want to thank the Police Department for that. And if I get an update maybe during that committee meeting from the Police Department, I'd invite you gentlemen to come to that, and I'd love to hear you there. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker.
Mayor, the next five speakers are here regarding Item 8D Pace Program. The first speaker being Jeanne Radzick.
Good evening, identify yourself and proceed.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, my name is Jeanne Radzick, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Bakersfield Association of Realtors. Realtors have recently become concerned with some of the impacts that the Pace programs are having on consumers. And we're especially concerned about the impact on the consumer protection because people who are using some of these programs do not adequately understand, and there are disclosure issues that are being created. At this time, we would ask the council to postpone this item on the consent agenda to expand the Pace programs in the city of Bakersfield until the next scheduled city council meeting to allow the Bakersfield Association of Realtors to work with staff and to be able to adequately express its concerns regarding the Pace programs that have surfaced in recent months. We appreciate the due diligence of the city staff on this and the committee work, and I thank you for your consideration of that request.
Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker.
The next speaker is James Ross.
Good evening, please identify yourself and proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers and staff, my name is James Ross. I am here on behalf of Y Green Energy Fund. We appreciate the council considering Y Green for its consent, excuse me, consent agenda, which is Item 8D. The city currently has multiple Pace programs within the city, and by bringing in Y Green, what you'd be doing is expanding the choices to your constituents and bringing in options that are not currently available. One of them would be bringing in the longest repayment terms, which is thirty-year options for solar. Another value to Y Green is that we're the number-one commercial and multifamily program, and we're number-two in residential. And this is all done under the same platform. And another advantage is that this financing is under a totally different Senate bill, which is Senate Bill 555, which also does not place a bulk assessment lien on the property of your constituents. Myself and my associates are here to answer any questions that you may have regarding Item 8D on consent. Thank you for your time.
Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. Since I think I heard there were three more speakers in an effort to maybe save your breath and your energy and out of respect of your time, I'm planning on pulling this item from the consent calendar and asking that we actually revisit it on September sixteenth. Not because I have an issue with the program. We went, we reviewed this in Budget and Finance extensively, and I think Pace programs and the Hero program are fantastic. But I've got some questions and some issues I'd like to hopefully be able to answer and solve in the next two weeks. So if I could, I just wanted to make that announcement to see if we might save some folks some time.
Mr. Mayor, may I provide these to you and your staff, just for information? Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker.
Adam Roberts.
Good evening, please identify yourself and proceed.
Good, thank you for the time. My name is Adam Roberts, Regional Account Manager here in Kern County for Y Green Energy Fund. I'll make it brief, you've already made your statement there, but I just want to let you know I've been out in the community talking to contractors, homeowners about this program and the differences of Y Green versus other Pace providers. I've got a couple of those contractors here that are excited and ready to move forward with projects. Probably got fifty-plus projects we can get permits pulled on as soon as we get the approval with over a million dollars in funding, just coming up in the next week. So just want you guys to consider that. And like James said, we will be here for any questions at all, anything you guys might have.
Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker.
Greg DeVal.
Good evening, please identify yourself and proceed.
Hi, my name is Greg DeVal. Good evening, City Council, Mayor Hall. We are in support of the Pace program. It would open up availability and options to those that are not able to qualify with lower credit scores to give us the opportunity to help as many homeowners as possible in the community. So I'll keep it brief, and we're definitely in support of that resolution. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker.
Mayor, the next speaker is Alan Alvarez.
Good evening, please identify yourself and proceed.
My name is Alan Alvarez. I represent EcoGreen Contractors. We're a water conservation and energy conservation company. So what this company, or what Y Green will allow us to do is provide low cost, low initial cost for our consumers. We do focus on water and energy conservation. Currently, I have a hundred fifty thousand dollars in contracts that are waiting. My crews are waiting to work, so I'm urging that, I'm requesting that we can get this done sooner than later. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker.
Mayor, the next six speakers are here regarding support for a resolution on renewing solar tax credit. The first speaker, Harlan O'Day.
Good evening, please identify yourself and proceed.
Good evening, my name is Harlan O'Day. Harlan O'Day.
It's the microphone that's closest to you, that one.
There we go, can we hear that? Okay, great. My name is Harlan O'Day. Been in the solar energy business for, since I was about this big, nineteen seventy-nine. And I'm here in support of a resolution for the tax credit that I think Councilmember Rivera's working on. And the reason why, it's been, it's fifteen months out before this thing expires at the end of next year. And you know, and why would we care about that fifteen months out? Because last time it was renewed, which was in nineteen, no, two thousand nine, which was renewed for six or seven years. It took many, many months of wrangling to get that done. And it was renewed at thirty minutes before it expired, on December thirty-first. So we're trying to get an earlier start on getting renewal done. Bakersfield happens to be the kickoff city for CALALSEA, which is the California Solar Energy Industries Association, which we're members of and sponsors of, many of us here. And so we're trying to get a motivation because Bakersfield and Kern County, according to many, many large corporations who are installing solar in Kern County at this moment, Kern County and Bakersfield is ground zero for renewable energy, as you probably all know. There are many projects going on here, and the big thing is it is an incredible revenue stream for the county of Kern and the city of Bakersfield. Because all of those large companies doing projects right now, actually hundreds of them have been going on the last few years, all have offices that they're opening in Bakersfield as a requirement, by the county, I think, as a requirement to run that revenue stream through Bakersfield and Kern County. It also provides many, many jobs, thousands of jobs, in this county and this city. And I have been teaching the last five years for the Kern Community College District, specifically teaching solar energy installation, of which we have many, many people here who have got jobs based on that. And we want to continue the effort. And if it takes three years for a company to develop a project, they need to know there's a tax credit out there that will be advantageous to them business-wise. And if we do not renew it this year or then, those jobs that they would have started planning already by now will go away, and all the tax revenue stream and all the jobs that are associated with it. So if there's anything that this council can do to help push along all our city-state, federal members, whatnot, including our local congressman, that would be wonderful. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to try and set a goal for more referrals than my colleague to my left today. If I could, in response to that, thank you, Harlan, for being here today. I'd like to ask that staff put together a resolution of support related to the investment tax credit and bring that to our meeting in October. There is some language that was just recently passed by the legislature. It actually included the support of our local legislators as well. I think the more renewable energy we've got going on, the better off everyone is. So if I could, I'd like to ask staff to bring that in October, and we'll work on that in the next coming few weeks to draft something and have it ready. Thank you.
I want to inform the next five speakers that we have twelve and a half minutes left on this item. So please step to the microphone, make your statements quickly. Do not repeat remarks of previous speakers, and make your statement quickly and close so we try to get everybody in. Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker.
Dan Mello.
Good evening, please identify yourself and proceed.
Dan Mello. Dan the Solar Man is my solar name. I've been in the solar business for fifteen years. A lot of you folks I've talked to about solar over those years. And a little bit about my background. I'm a graduate of Cal State Bakersfield, United States Marine Corps, six years, nineteen eighty Olympic team member, nineteen ninety-six Olympic coach. I like to do, I like to work with the best or be the best. The Solar ITC is a great thing for Bakersfield and California and everywhere else. So thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker.
Curtis Neal.
Good evening, please identify yourself and proceed.
Good evening, my name is Curtis Neal, and currently living in Lancaster. I grew up here in Bakersfield, and my family still lives here. Anyhow, yeah, the support of the ITC is what I want to support, and it's really necessary to continue this so we keep the industry developing and growing. It's done huge amounts already in the years it's been in effect, but if we kill it off, let it expire now, that we're going to see a great shrinking and shakeout in the industry. And if you look at Bakersfield, it's benefited quite a bit from it, lots of jobs from it. All the people here who are speaking tonight, I think, in support of this, they're all people who work in the field or benefit from having the lower energy, from having the solar on their roof.
Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker.
Brian McCarty.
Good evening, please identify yourself and proceed.
Good evening, my name is Brian McCarty. Mayor Hall, Vice Mayor Hanson, City Council, City Staff. Thanks for allowing us to come out tonight. I'm not going to take a lot of your time. Basically, the extension of the ITC is obviously going to be very beneficial for not only all of us, but as a representative of the Hero program, I can tell you that, and put a face to it, we've done hundreds of projects with contractors for families and individuals who have been able to do solar, and many of them have done it because of that issue. So, and it's definitely changed a lot of lives, saved them a lot of money, and made a lot of good for our community. So thank you for your time.
Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker.
Ricardo Armandares.
Good evening, please identify yourself and proceed.
Ricardo Armandares, thank you very much for your opportunity to be in front of all of you. Bakersfield is a city that definitely has set the trend for solar. I'm just here supporting the ITC and the continuation of that. Just saving money, say, helps people go solar. And being here, part of the Central Valley, I do sales, I do system design, I do day-to-day operations for my company. And I'm just here with, being optimistic that you guys are leading the way, and I just want to thank you for that.
Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker.
Jeff Brown.
Good evening, please identify yourself and proceed.
Yes, good evening, and thank you for having us, and ditto to all they said. As well as, just to let you know, I too have been doing solar since nineteen eighty-one. In nineteen eighty-three, we did have offices here, and over the years, I've done a little over a thousand projects in this area. So the ITC is very important, and it's all about jobs, you know? There's, right now, the new stats just came out, there's fifty-four thousand solar jobs. right now, the new stats just came out, there's 54,000 solar jobs in America. And if you add up all of our utilities here in California, that's more than all their employees. So, we're very strong, you know, it'd be devastating, I lived through 1986, when the tax credits ended, everyone said they were going to extend them, and it didn't. And it put all of us out of business. So, so it's very important. Thank you guys for your leadership, and anything you guys can do.
Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker, excuse me, Mayor, or Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry I was a little late on that. I just, I just want to let all you guys know, thank you for coming. But we are on record already, had staff prepare and send a letter to the state requesting the extension of the tax and appropriate people. So, we have moved forward, and we'll continue to move forward on that issue. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker.
Mayor, the last public speaker is Curtis Bingham, Sr., regarding the city and law enforcement.
Good evening, please identify yourself and proceed.
Yes, Honorable Mayor Curtis James Bingham, Sr., street evangelist for our Lord and Savior, God almighty Jesus Christ. And I'd just like to acknowledge, in God we trust up there, and I feel that's one reason why you guys are succeeding so well. And that's a good thing to come down, to be before winners. There's very few places you can go, and everybody you look at is a winner. The public said it, and our Lord and Savior said it. That's why you guys are sitting up there. Another thing that puts a smile on your face, is being in a city where the council has something to do, money to spend, projects to look at. That shows that we're doing a real good prosperous thing for the city of Bakersfield, and some cities don't have anything to do. But I'm here today, you know, always come down for the law, because the Lord is the head of law enforcement. And so, I would like to come down for that reason. But when I do, remember, it's also for you, for everybody out there in law enforcement, because law enforcement serves all of us. We have that computer forensic unit, could use the little systems over there. You know, they were able to get to half of the things that came to them. And so, it's a beautiful thing to see them, to say, well, we'd like to complete every single request that we have. We'd like to get to all of them, because you know, the world is starting to run on computer systems these days. And we have the happy criminal that's running around. The happy criminals are the ones that come here that you can't identify. You can't fingerprint them. And they happy because they can do things, and it's hard to catch them. So, the forensic computer unit over there, I just wanted to come in with some respect, because law enforcement has power, but you also have power too with your word, to say yes, to make sure we give them everything that they need to keep things going. You know, we had a law enforcement officer, a guy walked up, two inches a couple of days ago, shot him 12 times in the back. Yeah, we talking in the back. And you know, we had another situation in Bakersfield, a man did not want to come out the house, but now hit a law, got to go in the house, the man in there with a shotgun, but they still willing to go in and put their lives on the line. It's real out there. So, the only thing I just wanted to say, we should make sure we really, really respect our law enforcement, and Chief Williams, what he's trying to do for us. The Lord tell us, we have many teachers, but few fathers. Chief Williamson is what you call a father. One of his officers get hurt, you know, it's on his mind. They're out there all the time. We get to go to sleep and wake up. Law enforcement is 24/7. The Lord say, he never sleep but slumber, and law enforcement is the same way. They never sleep but slumber, they there for us. And I also like to say this, you know, the Lord said, be careful who you entertain. Some entertain angels unaware, and you got one up there, and Councilman Sullivan. And so, I want that to be a blessing. Once upon a time, Moses was leading the people through Israel, and the Lord had to put him to sleep, and took his spirit out of him, and put it on 70 other men, so they could be able to help him do what he's doing. So, I'd just like to say to the city manager and city attorney, you guys in that order in a great way, as well as yourselves. Some have a greater portion of the spirit, because I know you don't sleep well, because your mind is constantly running about how to keep things going for the city, and all these new issues are coming up. So, the Lord would just like to say, thank him, bless you in that area too. And I also like to say, Mayor, when you look at a city, we got that big sign that says, "Bakersfield." Well, if they ever wanted to put up an image and put your face all over the city, you'll have more people here that'd be willing to see that happen, behind the way you have stood for us, and you have really put us on the map in a great way. And so, I come down here to be positive. The Lord said, he will forgive us of our sins if we confess them. He'll forget our sins, but he will remember every good thing we do. So, when I come down here, I'm coming down here with the Spirit of the Lord, to make sure you guys get blessed for what you do, because sometimes you're not recognized in what you do. And there's some of us out there, we really appreciate what you're doing. And I just want you to know, in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, he thank you guys, he preparing you for leadership in heaven, because what you're doing now, and the Lord says, some over one city, some over two, some over five, all of you guys is in the order of five cities, when the Lord call you in, according to your belief. So, thank you for this opportunity, and mighty mayor, thank you. And Chief Williams, and thank you for being a good father to your men and to us here. And let's be a blessing and give law enforcement everything that they desire to get out there to keep us protected, because without them, we're not nothing. Put a bunch of new cars here, the prettiest ones in the world, but if you can't give them no gas, they won't be anything. So, Bakersfield is gas for us. So, let's keep it filled up, so we can stay blessed. Name it Jesus, thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Consent calendar, items 8A through 8AD for approval.
Vice Mayor Hanson, please.
Thank you, Mayor Hall.
Does any council member wish to remove an item due to a conflict? Or remove themselves due to a conflict, I should say. Okay. Saying none, does any council member wish to remove an item for separate consideration? Mr. Rivera, I know you.
I don't know if I need to, do I need to say it again?
8D, got it. Mr. Maxwell?
8I.
8H.
8H.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve consent calendar items 8A through 8AD, as in David, with exceptions of items 8D, David, 8H, and 8I.
You have a motion, please cast your votes.
Motion was unanimously approved.
Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. As I mentioned before, I'd like to consider this item 8D on September 16th. Thank you. If I could just ask the members of the audience who came, you two gentlemen, right there in particular, if you wouldn't mind maybe leaving your phone number with staff, so I could give you a call tomorrow, that'd be great. Thank you.
Now, you asked this to be delayed on this item?
Yes, sir.
What was the date?
September 16th.
Do we need a motion for this? You have a motion to have this item delayed to September the 16th. Please cast your votes.
Motion was unanimously approved.
Councilmember Maxwell on item 8I, please. How many items do you have here? Just H?
He has H, I have I.
Okay, let's go with 8H first.
Thank you, Mayor. Could staff explain what this item is, please?
Certainly. Mayor, Councilmember Smith, and council, this has to do with the Kern River Municipal Flow Program that the council approved, certified the EIR. It was a programmatic EIR back in 2012. And as a member of the Water Board, Councilmember Smith, I'm sure you're aware that we were challenged on that by a variety of parties. And the court basically found that the EIR did not have sufficient description in the project description, enough to tell the public why we were doing the programmatic EIR in connection with our application with the State Water Resources Control Board. And so, the Tulare Court is asking, is actually demanding, telling the city council that we need to rescind approval of the EIR, and basically go back and modify the project description to include a little bit more information as to how that Kern River Flow Project is connected to the State Water Resources Control Board application. And we will go through that process again, and hopefully have it back to the council by the end of the year.
So, it doesn't stop the project? We just make the corrections or whatever the judge wanted to the EIR, and then hopefully we move forward, or?
Well, in this particular case, unlike the situation with the SEQA EIR in the 24th Street, council did not approve a project as part of the Kern River Flow Municipal Program. It was a programmatic EIR, and it was meant to, again, it was done at the request of the State Water Resources Control Board, and it was to analyze the environmental impacts of what would happen if and when the state grants us water to flow down the river. So, we, you, the council, did not approve that particular project. So, there's really nothing to move forward with at this particular time. Our application is still on file with the state, with the State Water Resources Control Board, and they are waiting for this EIR to be revised and to come back. But it's not delaying anything or stopping any particular project.
So, the EIR gets revised, and then it comes back to us to approve again?
Yes, sir.
And then it goes back to the judge to see if he's happy with the changes that we made?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. I would make a motion to approve item 8H.
You have a motion, please cast your votes.
Motion was unanimously approved.
Councilmember Maxwell on item 8I, please.
Thank you, Mayor Hall. I'm pulling this particular item. It is the resolution, vacating the resolution of numbers 029-14, which certified final environmental impact report, and approved the 24th Street Improvement Project. You know, I want to start by talking about the, what this project was for, what its purpose was, because everybody at this point seemed to call it the 24th Street Widening Project, and that's not what it is. It's the Improvement Project. It was brought along to try and improve the traffic flow on 24th Street. I'd ask the city attorney to please describe for the audience here and those watching, why Judge Twisselman enacted an injunction, and what it means for us here tonight.
Mayor, Councilmember Maxwell, and council, in essence, as the administrative report points out, there were several arguments made by the petitioners as to why the environmental impact report was not deemed adequate. And again, suffice it to say that while there were arguments that the city prevailed in, the two areas where the city did not prevail in, is that the court found that the EIR did not adequately explain enough about why the eight potentially feasible alternatives were not studied as actual project alternatives. And the court also found that the EIR piecemealed the impacts of the cul-de-sac, and that, again, the EIR should have done a better job of incorporating the cul-de-sac into the project description. And so, those are the areas that staff is going to be concentrating on in terms of renewing the environmental document moving forward.
So, it was consistent with my argument back when we first considered this EIR. I would also ask, do we really have a choice here tonight to decertify or not to decertify? I mean, this is basically an order from the judge, and this is just a formality?
Councilmember Maxwell, there is no choice tonight as to whether council needs to do that. This is a, this is an order from the court.
Great, thank you. Mr. Tandy, the administrative report states that the judge, Judge Twis, that the court, Judge Twisselman decided that the EIR failed to adequately explain why eight alternatives initially considered for the project were eliminated from further evaluation as project alternatives. The court ordered that the city provide additional information analysis in the EIR to cure the deficiency identified. You took this directly from the notice of entry on the order?
Councilmember Maxwell, actually, the city attorney wrote the admin for that project.
Okay, great. The city attorney, that was taken pretty much from the notice of entry?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And at this point, we are still planning on spending $30 million of the $40 million that the county gave us to complete the 24th Street Improvement Project, based on its construction costs? That's what we've seen most recently, said 30 million was going to be, had been earmarked for 24th Street.
Councilmember Maxwell, I'm not exactly sure that the exact dollar value, Nelson Smith might be able to provide.
Mayor Hall, Councilmember Maxwell, the amount of money of the county funds allocated to the 24th Street project is 24.5 million.
24.5, great. So, we have freedom to use that 24.5 any way we want. We are not bound by the federal government saying you have to spend that money in a certain manner.
Councilmember Maxwell, the agreement with the county indicated that it was to be used on the TRIP program. That's the only restriction.
Okay. You know, the last entry on the notice of entry order is an order, not a finding. And in the way that this was presented so far, what we're looking at is what the finding of the court was. So, I'd like to read a little bit of what the order by the court was. Judgment shall be entered in favor of the petitioner, that's the plaintiffs, in this proceeding. A preemptory writ of mandate directed to the respondents, that's the city of Bakersfield, shall be issued under seal of this court. A, ordering the city to void its certification, the final EIR, and void its approval of the project. That's, of course, why we're here tonight. Enjoining the respondents to, from approving or carrying out the project, and also ordering the respondents to suspend all activity which could result in adverse change or alteration to the physical environment until compliance with SEQA is affected. To bring the EIR into compliance with SEQA, the respondent shall provide additional information analysis that clearly discloses the reasons for selecting potentially feasible alternatives, and then adequately analyzes and discusses whether or not each of these potentially feasible alternatives satisfies at least one of the four threshold criteria under the guidelines. The respondents must also analyze the additional cul-de-sacs requested by the public as a part of the project, including a description of any new impacts on visual and historic resources. Under Resources Code Section subdivision, this court does not direct respondents exercise their lawful discretion in any particular way. The court shall retain jurisdiction over these proceedings in accordance with public resources until it has been determined that the city has complied with SEQA. So, the city has to go back to the judge before it can be brought back to us. So, what you have in the administrative report is the findings, or the findings were that we lost, why we lost, and the remedy is stated very differently. I have read all the transcripts from all the court proceedings, and I strenuously recommend that my colleagues do the same. I strenuously suggest that the public do the same, so that they get a flavor for what the judge was really intending in what he said. I attended the July 10th court proceeding and listened to Judge Twisselman, and I want to read what he said. This is from the July 10th, 2015. "In an effort to offer, just to offer guidance, I said you have the discretion to select either the same alternatives, eight alternatives, that you chose before, or you may choose new alternatives. It's up to you. It is your discretion, and you might very well select a new range of alternatives that might include some or all of the eight, and some or all of others." He goes on to say, "The court finds that these defects in the EIR, referring to the proper analysis of alternatives to the project, the proper analysis of adding additional cul-de-sacs to the project, the court finds that these defects are not discrete and severable issues, because it appears to be reasonably possible that the entire project might be substantially redesigned, or even possibly moved to another site after further SEQA review. At this point, those are possibilities that the court cannot rule out." Potential alternatives reviewed, and there's the criteria he spoke of. Number one, can substantially reduce the significant environmental impacts. Number two, can attain most of the basic project objectives. Number three, are potentially feasible, and number four, are reasonable and realistic. In my interpretation, Judge Twisselman was very clear. He is not saying, "Look at those eight and come back to me." I believe he is saying that he is leaving us a lot of leeway to pick what alternatives we want to come back with in our supplemental EIR. I want to point out that there was a prediction made in 2008 that the EIR was based on, and they predicted in 2015 what the traffic rates or the vehicle counts would be in the 24th Street area, both in the tree streets as well as in the couplet area. And we have information now from 2014 that shows that those particular predictions were 44% too high. So, that was just eight years later, they're 44% too high. And actually, recently, KernCOG released And actually, recently, KernCog released the numbers for 23rd and F, just west of F, and there was a further 21% decrease over the last year. So in one year, it's decreased 21% further. So I will publicly request, based on what I've read, that the city include in the supplemental EIR the consideration of Golden State with the Hagman Flyover as a viable alternative route. There was one other suggestion from the public I think has merit. Please include the possibility of restriping 24th Street to six lanes in the tree area, three in each direction, in the middle turn lane, we have, obviously, we would have three in each direction with no middle turn lane and four lanes on 23rd and 24th in the couplet area. I would include the removal of the house on the southeast corner of 24th and B Street to smooth out that corner in the S curve. 24th Street presently has five lanes, is five lanes wide and has parking on both sides. Let me repeat that. It has, it is five lanes wide and has parking on both sides. It is under 90 feet, which matches the section of Truxton between Empire Drive and the train overpass to the west. That section of road is 1,800 linear feet, and since the opening of the West Park Freeway has traffic, has peak traffic, our peak hour traffic, that is about the same as 24th Street. I will also suggest that it might be wise to combine these two alternatives into one alternative. In order to accomplish the goals of the project and to pay for it with TRIP money, we could do both elements and make it one alternative. We have $40 million from the county. If we instruct Hagman Flyover first, we may not have to widen 24th Street and therefore save $30 million in construction costs. If we widen 21st Street first, Hagman Flyover will still need to be done. So based on that, I have made my requests. They can be honored. The judge said he's going to give you a lot of leeway, but that is my suggestion. And with that, as it is stated, I will go ahead and make a motion that we approve item eight I.
Councilmember Weir?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I have a question. So is the motion just to approve item eight I as it is in our packet?
That's how I hear it, Councilmember Weir.
Okay. Then where would the other requests come into play?
I'm taking it, sir, that Councilmember Maxwell is simply putting his comments on the record.
From hearing what we just heard, that, in his own comments, isn't it a little premature to try to place additional conditions or restrictions or alternatives in an EIR that we're going to have to study and come up with findings on its own?
Mayor, Councilmember Weir, again, staff has not yet completed a strategical approach as to how we're going to cure the court's ruling. And in some cases, sometimes some additional alternatives are picked. But keep in mind, in this particular case, what the court is simply saying is, look, you had eight potentially feasible alternatives, and you came to a conclusion that those eight potentially feasible alternatives were not to be, or you decided, city, that you didn't want to turn them into project alternatives. And the court is saying, "I want you to go back and I want you to look at it again, and I want you to put more meat to the bones." That's one interpretation. Councilmember Maxwell has a different interpretation. But we are not here tonight to explain what that strategy is going to be at this time. There will be a time in the future when that decision is made, and the city attorney will share that with the council.
So, Mr. Tandy, I assume that as we go through this EIR, that we'll have consultants, and I assume it's Parsons or somebody like that, and they're going to do adequate studies of traffic and everything else, and they're going to make recommendations on what goes into that EIR? Appropriate recommendations, is that not correct?
Councilmember Weir, certainly Parsons, city staff, in connection with the legal defense team that the city has representing its interests, will make judgments in regard to the supplemental work that needs to be done.
Exhaustive studies to satisfy the EIR requirements?
The best possible effort to comply with the judge's order.
I'm asking this question because I really don't want staff running around, spending a lot of time and money on suggestions from whomever, if they're not legitimate alternatives, if they're not legitimate possibilities. I would prefer that our legal team, our staff, and our consultants spend their time doing what the judge requested and moving forward on that basis, and whatever they find, that's fine. But to suggest that they go off on some other tangent, I'm not particularly in favor of them doing that. So I would like to leave it to staff's discretion and legal discretion, our consultants' discretion on to how they pursue this and how they come back to us. And I don't think us sitting at the dais should be instructing you on what paths or course to follow. And I guess since we're only approving the item on the agenda, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion was unanimously approved.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Hearings.
Before I open the public hearing, I wish to state the presentation time policy. Each side will be allowed 15 minutes. It is 15 minutes for all speakers. Therefore, it is important that you identify yourself and make your statements quickly so that others may speak. We will hear statements from those opposed to the staff recommendation first. Then we will hear from those who wish to speak in favor of the staff recommendation. If there is testimony on both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal period. You will notice a clock on the wall behind me, which indicates 15 minutes. Please step to the microphone and identify yourself. At 14 minutes, a yellow light will come on. At the end of 15 minutes, a red light will flash indicating that your time is up. And to quickly end your statement, you may pose questions during your statement, but they will not be answered until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, provide it to the city clerk, who will then provide the copies to the city council. Again, please be courteous to others who wish to speak. Unless there is an approval by the majority of the city council, there is a strict 15-minute time limit for all those in favor or in opposition to staff's recommendation. So please be precise and do not repeat the remarks of previous speakers. Madam Clerk, please read the public hearing item.
Hearing item A is U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Action Plan Amendments.
Mr. McIsaac, do you have comments on this item?
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, I can go give you a brief overview if you wish on this item, or if not, willing to go to testimony.
If you do not have any statements, then I'm going to move on.
Okay.
At this time, I will open the public hearing and ask if there is anyone who wishes to speak in opposition. Persons wishing to speak in opposition, seeing none, I'm now going to ask if there are persons present who wish to speak in favor of the staff recommendation. Persons wishing to speak in favor of the staff recommendation. Seeing none, I will now close the hearing on this item and return to council for comment and action. Vice Mayor Hanson, please.
Thank you, Mayor Hall. Motion to approve staff's recommendation.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion was unanimously approved.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item is New Business, League of California Cities Annual Conference Appointment of Voting Delegate and City Position on Conference Resolutions.
Mr. Teglia, do you have comments on this item?
Good evening, Mayor Hall, members of the council. Just, this is the process prior to the League's annual conference, where the council delegates one of its members to be a voting delegate and perhaps an alternate or two. And then staff has made some recommendations related to the four resolutions that are pending during the conference, so for council consideration.
Vice Mayor Hanson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have a motion to appoint someone to the California League of Cities? I believe Jackie has done it in the past. Chris may be interested. But we need a, maybe a volunteer. Go ahead, Paul. Yeah, I'll make the motion.
I'd like to make the motion to adopt Ken Weir to represent us.
Thank you. We have a motion.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion was unanimously approved.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Council and mayor statements.
Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be quick. I have two referrals. One, they're both related to meetings I had today with staff. Just want to ask that staff continue working on this idea of a youth commission. As I discussed, I'd like to actually be able to make a presentation to the council in the near future. So if we could continue working on that and identify a date for me to face my colleagues in the front and present that, I would appreciate it. And then additionally, I had made a referral related to e-cigarettes a few meetings back, and it turns out that there's actually a piece of legislation in the legislature right now related to e-cigarettes. And I'd like to ask that we prepare a resolution in support of SB 2X5. And once approved, submit that to its author, our representatives here in Kern County, and anyone else that might be interested. Thank you. Have a good night.
Councilmember Parlier?
Thank you, Mayor. A while back, I made a referral to, and also to work with staff regarding creating some sort of administrative mechanism where, you know, things might be falling through the cracks and where the Bakersfield Municipal, I guess Criminal Code, for lack of a better word, the BMC, isn't necessarily applicable or the best tool to be used. I want to thank the city attorney and the city manager's office for thinking outside the box on this one. I think we came up with some ideas that it could be used in the future. And I'd also like to refer this to ledge and lit, just for an overview, and possibly some other items that can be looked at to be used. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor Hall. I have a procedural question on the California League representation for Mr. Weir. There's four resolutions on here. Do we vote on that, or how does that work?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The city manager reminded me that we had not voted on that. I assume that your motion to, or Councilmember Smith's motion to appoint Councilmember Weir also included the fact that you would be taking staff's recommendation on those items. But if you'd like to make it clear, by all means, please, please make another motion.
That was the intent.
I could read your minds.
All right, thank you.
He got it.
And then the second item I have, I just want to congratulate, there's a list of 50, but a couple of meetings ago, I asked a question regarding water usage, the top 50 users. City of Bakersfield's on here, I see. We've done a good job. We've reduced water usage month of July over the month of July 1913 by 55%. Cal State Bakersfield, 66%. North Bakersfield, 67%. And most of them are just in a, in a 40s and 50% range. So we've done a great job, thanks to all these businesses. I just wanted to recognize them. I'm sorry, I can't mention everybody. I know that it would take a while, so just wanted to mention that. I think that, it tells me one thing, though, that as homeowners, we probably need to tighten our belt a little bit as far as trying to reduce the usage. Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, yeah, continuing the drought discussion, it's doing a good job of killing off the redwood trees that we should have never planted, I think we know. But there's, on Callaway, in between Rose Dell and Hagman, there's a few in the center median, and I think they become a hazard and a liability very quickly. And so if we can remove those, I would appreciate it.
If there are no further council comments, we stand adjourned.